Ridgefield's Planning and Zoning Commission. Prejudicial public treatment, or different strokes for different folks. Take Public Application A twenty-two dash one. To update Ridgefield's outdated cannabis regulation publicly brought only because the commission refused to act on a Board of Selectmen approved town policy. Accepted on June fourteenth, the public hearing delayed to the absolute limit of August sixteenth. They didn't even set the date until July twenty-sixth. And when might it be decided? Your guess is as good as any. In contrast, A dash twenty-two dash two, a commission-initiated moratorium extension. Commission proposed and accepted on July twenty-sixth with a public hearing set immediately on August sixteenth. And a decision that same night. Who does this commission work for? The public or for themselves? See for yourself in this clip of the August sixteen hearings and decision and indecision.
We'll move on with a public hearing. Item number two on the agenda, two dot two. This is application A dash twenty-two dash one, Regulation Amendment application, proposing to prohibit all medical and adult-use cannabis establishments in all zoning districts in the town of Ridgefield. The applicant is Mr. Kirk Carr. I will open the public hearing and I will allow Mr. Carr to talk.
Oh, um, Rob, can I read the list of correspondence?
Oh, yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. We received a letter from Mr. Tartaglia. It was undated, but we uploaded it on June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We received a police department. I don't, I don't know if we actually need department as correspondence, but I'll read it anyway. Police Department, we received seven twenty-one. Mr. Tartaglia sent another letter dated seven nineteen. We received it August fourth. Health Department, we received their comments on eight August second. A C Simontini sent a letter and we received that eight twelve twenty-two. You brought that up in correspondence and we received comments from Social Services Department yesterday, eight fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. And also the legal notice was published in the Ridgefield Press on August fourth and August eleventh, eleventh, and we formally received it on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Oh, and you know what? I should also mention and apologize in advance. So I sent out the referral letters. Obviously, Alice does, as per normal, Alice did the referrals at the departments with the other kind of staff departments. I did the referrals to the, you know, sort of elected and boards and commissions. And I will apologize when I, we have, we've kind of a standard referral letter which, which references the section. And actually, I have made a mistake and, and as I edited them and sent them out, I referenced the special permit application section in a, in a part of the letter. I don't, I, I don't believe that, you know, impacts the referral letter, the referrals made. But it was a kind of typographical error and I apologize to Mr. Carr for that. And anybody else that, I think that was just a typo. But there. Mr. Carr is now promoted and Mr. Carr, you have the stage. We always start with the applicant. So public hearings open and you can present your, your case.
Yes, could I have my screen control? Can I take the screen?
Yeah, I think we need to make you a panelist to do that. Let me, let me do that next. There you go. You should be good to go, Mr. Carr. Mr. Carr, you're muted if you don't. Trying to talk.
Um, and if he has trouble, we can make him a co-host. We might have to so we can share his screen.
Okay. I can't make him a co-host from my screen now, so I can make.
Oh, probably because I started meeting. Okay, I'll make him a co-host right now.
Attendee.
Be able to share his screen.
Very good. There he is. Yeah.
Okay. Can I screen share now?
Yep, you should be able to.
Okay. I don't know why the sound is. Can you hear me?
Yes.
For some reason, the sound is not operating here. Hang on, there's some, there's a control. I tried this earlier today. There was control where I could turn on the sound. And I don't see it.
We're hearing fine.
I know, but you can't, you can't hear the, what's on the screen.
Oh. So if you, next to the mute button on the bottom left, Mr. Carr, if you see there's an up arrow and there's a select the microphone and select a speaker option sometimes if you have, you know, multiple inputs on your side.
Let's see.
Up arrow at right next to mute.
Right, I see that.
A lot of your settings can be there.
Built-in output. They try to display audio, see if that will do it. Okay. Can you hear me still?
Yes.
Maybe not, okay. I don't, I'm still not getting audio. For some reason, I'm still not getting the audio on this. Let me try this. Select a speaker. Switch to, um, leave now. Select. Display port. Yeah, I'm not quite sure why I can't get the audio to, here's audio settings.
What are you trying to play something like a video with sound? Is that what it is?
Now, whether you can see what's going on on my screen or not, but.
Yeah. For that, you want to share screen right about dead center in your Zoom window.
Yeah, I don't think you're getting my, what's on my screen.
No, we're only seeing.
Tell us about it.
I'm sorry, say again.
Can you tell us about it? What are we supposed to be seeing?
Well, you're supposed to be seeing a presentation that, that basically gives you a lot of background, including a lot of information about two eighty E of the tax code. It's an interview with, with a cannabis dealer in, in San Francisco with the Vice President of the California Cannabis Industry Association. But it's basically, there's a lot of information about why cannabis is is an unsustainable business model. It's very unfortunate that, you know, we were doing this by Zoom when in person, this would have been a lot more effective. And I don't see a way of, I mean, I see screen share seems to be on. Let me just see if there's advanced sharing options. Let me see if this will do it.
If you just, if you just click right on the arrow for share screen, not the, not the arrow on the right, but the arrow that's right above the E and share usually. That should give you the ability to share.
Maybe this will do it.
There you go. We're saying it down.
See how this works.
Yeah.
I'm still not getting any sound. Can you hear me?
Can hear you and we can see your video now.
But there's no sound from the video.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Is it possible that you could narrate along with the video or is it a lot of audio?
It's a lot of audio and it's input from different sources. Stop video. Multiple panelists, one panelist, advanced settings. Multiple to participants. Host panelists.
Mr. Carr, can, when, can you hear the audio on your own, on your own video when you play it? Can you hear it on your, on your computer?
Yeah, no, I'm not hearing it at all.
Okay, so that, at least we know what the problem is. It, it seems like the problem may be in the actual app, application. I can't tell what application you're using. Maybe QuickTime or something.
Let's see. QuickTime preferences. I mean, it was working fine today. I even went on Zoom and tested it and it was working.
You were away, Mr. Chairman. We could move on with the agenda while Mr. Carr tries to work this out.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Carr is okay with that. Mr. Carr, would you like to, you know, would you like us to either maybe move forward to the next agenda item or continue?
I'm trying, I'm trying to get back to you. Let me see, stop, share. Here we go. Okay. Yeah, I don't know. It's not, it's not, it's very unsatisfactory. But, you know, in the, the basis of the presentation is that the cannabis business, because it's so heavily taxed because of two eighty E. How many of you have ever heard of two eighty E of the, of the federal tax code? What two eighty E basically says is that a cannabis, anyone that's in, that's dealing in controlled substances cannot take any of the normal business expenses except the cost of goods sold. And the result is that they end up paying a seventy percent highly confiscatory tax, which basically pushes, and this is based upon the Cannabis Industry Association's own video. It pushes a great deal of that business back into the illicit market. And as a result of all of that, California had to bail out their legal cannabis business with a hundred million dollar appropriation last year. I have on video, one of the cannabis dealers who says that he did eleven million dollars in sales. He netted a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And then the, after he paid taxes, he lost eighty thousand dollars. I have also a Vice President of the Industry Association explaining how many of the quote legal cannabis dealers have to operate in both the legal and illegal market. And I have the cannabis proprietor explaining how the cartels are back. So between the cartels and the, the movement of legal cannabis dealers, they are much less scrupulous about selling only to adults than the quote legal cannabis, the adult legal cannabis that you think you will be getting in a, in a distribution in, in Ridgefield. But the, the other point that is made is that this, this application is not really changing your existing regulation, which already prohibits recreational cannabis in, in seven dot one three B two. And that was passed in twenty fifteen. And it gives six reasons why you pass that, why the commission passed that. And those reasons are still as valid today as they were in twenty fifteen. The Board of Selectmen was asked by you to give them a policy, some, some guidance. You received a letter from the first selectman on the twenty-fifth of April. He met with you in person on the twenty-sixth. Mr. Katz at that meeting asked if he thought that, you know, you were obligated to, to, to do anything as a result of that. He said, that was really up to you, but he really hoped that you would do it. I have videos of meetings with the Board of Selectmen where they repeatedly say how disappointed they are that the Planning and Zoning Commission did not take their guidance, did not follow their policy. And it's really out of some desperation that they have come forward with the ordinance. And by the way, the ordinance was not advanced until after this application was received by you. So we pre, we, we predated their moving on this ordinance. They're going to have, they've had their fourth and then now tomorrow they will have their fifth public hearing on this. And after their first three hearings, they voted four to one to advance this policy against adult recreation cannabis in the town of Ridgefield, town of Ridgefield. This is really your last chance before there, there is a town meeting on this to exercise your authority to salvage to some degree your relevance in making this decision. I think you've said that if there's a, if there's a, an ordinance passed, it is sort of, you know, that's the end of it. You don't have to worry about it. But this, this application will remain even after an ordinance is passed or not passed. And the existing regulation will continue whether the ordinance is passed or not passed and whether the moratorium expires or doesn't expire. This application, it should be viewed as something very helpful to the Planning and Zoning Commission to do what the Board of Selectmen ask you to do and which I personally think you should have done some time ago. I was really very disappointed that the motion was tabled and then, and then withdrawn. And as a result, Planning and Zoning has basically given up its authority on something that it should be trying to preserve. This application gives you that opportunity to preserve your authority. And this is what you were elected to do. Sending it back to a town meeting or to referendum is not why people elect a Planning and Zoning Commission. So I hope tonight that you will close this public hearing. You have until September to close it, but I hope you'll close it tonight and that you will vote on this application and approve it tonight. And as I say, preserve your authority in this matter. So I thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm sorry it took us so long to get to a public hearing and that it was done under these circumstances rather than in person. It really didn't have to be this way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carr. I see, I see a hand up in Mr. John Tartaglia. I also see a hand up in Ms. Gloria Norrit, who I think is representing the ECDC, which is one of our referral entities. And typically what we do in a public hearing, we allow the applicant to present their case. Sometimes we have staff, I'll look at Alice and see if she wants to jump in then. And then we typically go to, to referral groups. So that would be Ms. Norrit would be the next and Mr. Tartaglia. I'll, I'll consider him a member of the public. So Mr. Tartaglia will definitely take your input, but if you could just hold on. Unless Mr. Carr, is Mr. Tartaglia sort of co-presenting with you?
Mr. Tartaglia is a, a co-applicant along with John, Mr. John Noonan, which I would have mentioned in the presentation, had it been able to be, to be run.
Yeah, I only saw your name on the, on the form, but I did remember that his name was kind of references co-applicant. So would you like him to speak as a co-applicant?
Yes, absolutely. Please.
So then that's, I'll do, I'll promote Mr. Tartaglia to a panelist first. And, and Mr. Carr, you still have the floor if you'd like to let Mr. Tartaglia add, add whatever.
How do I do that? I have to.
I, I put him up already as a panelist and he, if he just unmutes and turns on his video, he should be good to go. Mr. Tartaglia, if you can just hit unmute, you should be good to go. I don't know, Mr. Carr, if you're in communication with him in another way, but. I don't.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm John Tartaglia, six thirty-eight Danbury Road. Co-applicant in twenty-two dash one, I believe this number is. I support it and believe it should pass. I think the issue, first of all, Mr. Carr, I think should be thanked as both a journalist and as a citizen for the work he's done on this and a couple of the matters that are hot before your board. But he's presented quite a bit and he should be given the opportunity to put in his last video. But a great deal of it is on ridgefieldrecord.com. We have been, Mr. Carr in the lead, very much in support of what is before you now, which is, I believe, a different issue than perhaps Mr. Carr has emphasized. As a subordinate legislative body, you submitted to the authority of the selectman. The selectman told you their policy, that is the town policy. Your commission, as I understand it from the statute and the constitution, you are not superior to, nor can you overrule or change a Board of Selectmen ordinance. And I think in this case, I submit that your legislative authority is limited to simply doing what you did, I suppose, back in twenty fifteen, which was the moratorium, which essentially, had it not been a moratorium, would have banned all marijuana, excuse me, cannabis uses in the town. So I think the issue before you tonight is simple. A subordinate board has asked for and received the mandate from the Board of Selectmen. A proposed ordinance was presented in the vacuum, that is, nothing coming out of the Board of Selectmen is, as we had hoped, as quickly. I think the draft resolution simply reflects the statute. I think your choice is not to re-debate whether or not the state had the authority to use the lever of social equity to create this law, which may be very questionable in a court of law. Rather, the mandate of the selectman, which is superior to you and simply follow it with a clear, concise ordinance, tracking the statute and setting forth or confirming the policy as provided to you. Any other discussion? I don't think it's relevant to a great deal of evidence, evidence, peer-reviewed scientific studies overwhelmingly demonstrated to the Board of Selectmen. The reasons why scientifically the propounding of social legislation is improper. It, it just isn't good for Ridgefield. It's not right, plus scientifically, that is not pro-use of cannabis. Also statutory commissions in various states advised on, on the problems, difficulties and the reasons why this hasn't worked out in the states where it's been legalized. That's not your question. You don't have to cover that ground. The ground you have to cover is only, will we obey the Board of Selectmen's mandate? Will we adopt twenty-two ones application which tracks the mandate or not? To re-debate marijuana in the state at the moment, although Mr. Carr and I and Mr. Newman are agreed if you deny the application. At the moment, it's not an issue because the legislature gave the town a choice. And its choice was you can opt out of this. Choice invokes and requires reason. Reason in civic order, that is, a, a local civic government requires necessity. There is no reason or no necessity, given the policy of the Board of Selectmen to deviate or depart from the mandate of the Board of Selectmen. And that, I believe, is your central question. I do want to state, I believe, a, a lot of the data that came in in support of marijuana. There was only one real reason, a truly utilitarian, materialistic reason to it. Well, we can make a lot of money. I pointed out in my last letter mathematically for Mrs., I believe it's Miss or Mrs. Knowit and Mr., the gentleman who was the chairman, now he's the Secretary of ECDC, Mr. Morris. I believe they suggested that the town could make a couple of million a year. I supplied calculations, a simple addition, multiplication and subtraction on why that would be virtually impossible. It would be such an amount of marijuana or cannibal, cannibal, cannabis products that it would be ridiculous to state this was a town, a town need or a town use at all. In fact, all the statistics and all the data would indicate otherwise. To achieve what the, the only proponents of this, allowing this cannibal, cannabinoid use, which is, well, we make a lot of money. Let's just turn our other eyes and we'll join the Indians up in the reservations up in the northeast of Connecticut. You know, we'll do the same thing as gambling. I think begs the question, and quite frankly, mathematically doesn't work out. Mr. Carr has presented the social reasons. We presented a great deal of peer, peer-reviewed data, which was absolutely lacking from Mr. Morrison, Mrs. Knowit's presentation or study in the Economic Development Commission. Not even basic economic analysis was done by that commission. I, I don't think their recommendation is credible. The, and I submit that most respectfully. And the Social Service Commission submission, which I don't know what it meant. I feel is quite specious also, since it was the only one that stood on the fence and went on about how they need more money to prevent the use of marijuana. At the same time, seemingly propounding or seemingly positive on the fence, propounding denying our application. Other than that, the police department were not in favor of any, anyone with a brain in any department jurisdiction would deny it. The only other reason, and I will not accept this reason, I will not accept it. It is not within your authority, even to consider it, is, well, I did it in the seventies and therefore it's got to be okay. That's fallacious reasoning. That's not a good basis for reasoning. As a matter of fact, statutorily, under your authority, i- i- it could not even be considered as a basis for your denying our application. So I'd like to focus you on the duty of obeying the Superior Board in a mandate that you requested. And I, I don't want to re-debate the Big Lebowski, which is a great movie, by the way. The Coen Brothers and Jeff Bridges created an extraordinary movie. But if one were to look at it, no, one wouldn't come out of it recommending marijuana use in or cannabinoid use in the town. It'll bring the wrong crowd. It will not add to our beautiful town. And I think there's quite a bit of evidence, peer-reviewed evidence that supports that and nothing, nothing that ECDC or Social Services brought forth were factual or based on anything other than, well, you know, maybe, maybe we could get some money out of it. Don't, don't follow that utilitarian path, not in this field, because it opens a, a door to bad reasoning for other matters. And quite frankly, I, I see no reason to deny this application nor to entertain any further pro or anti marijuana, cannabinoid, cannabinoid use. It's immaterial now because the choice was given to the towns. And quite frankly, the legislature knew they had to give you a choice because they were on really thin constitutional ice. And by giving you the choice and having accepted it and having been mandated a policy, I don't think legislatively you can do anything except, of course, under advice of your counsel, perhaps revising the language to your satisfaction to conform to the opt-out and the provisions of the statute, which are very specific of what you can opt out on. Always remembering that, of course, those who wish to indulge in doji can do so because the state law cannot, the state law overrides town law concerning delivery in and consumption within the town unless there's a non-smoking regulation in public. I'd like to leave it there and I want to commend again Kirk Carr. I want to commend his, his Ridgefield record. He's the last thing we got left. The Ridgefield Press got sold out the Hearst. Hearst is owned by a particular party. The only real good. The only real good local news coming in, Kirk Carr's done one hell of a job to be fair and honest, even though he's taken an opinion, to act like a journalist and provide you with information. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tartaglia. Before we go to Ms. Do for staff report and and Ms. Norrit probably for ECDC, which is a referral. I should make one clarification of fact, which actually we've discussed pretty extensively with Commission Council and also with Town Council and also with our First Selectmen. So it's something we spend a lot of time discussing here and just to clarify, because Mr. Tartaglia mentioned it a few times. Planning and must have tartaglia, I apologize if you misunderstand, the Planning and Zoning Commission is absolutely not a subordinate board or commission to the Board of Selectmen. We are separate. We are actually two separate commissions, elected, elected organizations. And what actually happened in the state statute that allowed marijuana throughout the state is that the statute enabled towns to prohibit cannabis establishments, the physical establishments, through either a town ordinance or a planning and zoning regulation. So the state statute allowed two paths to either control, regulate, or prohibit establishments. The ordinance is one path, and the ordinance has to be done through the Board of Selectmen, or traditionally is done through the Board of Selectmen. And the Planning and Zoning Commission obviously has regulatory ability to enact a regulation that would either control or prohibit. So it's actually not about being subordinate. It's about two separate entities. And again, this has been reviewed with counsel and Mr. Marconi pretty carefully. So the Board of Selectmen have, since quickly after the state statute was announced, within weeks, stated an intention to pursue an ordinance. And the reason that we did our moratorium was actually to allow them to pursue that path, that is their path. We separately have a path that we can follow. But just because one entity has an opinion, whichever entity it is, doesn't mean that the other is is beholden to that, to that path.
By responding to that, Mr. Hendrick, I understand fully your position. I respect it.
Position, it's a legal opinion.
No, I have said, you have, you have held, you have just held as the chairman of the commission, what you've just said. I don't want to contradict it, except to mention that I'm not quite certain that would be unchallenged in a court. I'm not quite certain.
That's what both are.
And that's why I'm suggesting, that's why I'm suggesting, I don't think you should deny this application. I don't think you should do it because it's going to result in an aggrievement and a challenge. I'm not sure a court is going to agree precisely under either our views. But I'm not quite certain the town is on the best of grounds and the path it has chosen. I would like to suggest that the ordinance, as twenty-two-one in the application, be approved, the hearing closed, unless, of course, there are more people maybe speaking tonight. And then you're certainly leaving it to the Board of Selectmen to then change or institute a statute in the charter, under the charter provisions, in the code, in the town code, as something that might be different. I think that's the best path now. I think it avoids a lot of conflict. And I don't think you have any basis to, otherwise, I don't think anyone's given you sound reason for. ECDC certainly has, and Social Service has. I know they feel otherwise, but it's weak. It's weak, and I don't think there's anybody on the board. You've done enough, we'll call it judicial review, to know that it's a weak argument on the other side. It's not a good one to take up. I, quite frankly, I'm going to take it up. I'm a retired guy. I got nothing to do. And quite frankly, I believe pretty strongly in the opt-out and the choice that the town made. And I think a citizen has the right to follow that path. And so I don't want to challenge it or insult you, but I just counsel what I just said. I think it's the wiser course. It will not prejudice anyone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tartaglia. So Alice, should we, do you want to do staff report now, or should I go?
All right, Glory can go ahead if she wants to.
Okay. Let me promote her. All right, Ms. Norrit, you should be to go.
Hi.
Hi.
So I am here to represent the Economic and Community Development Commission, of which I am chair, and would like to make a statement regarding the cannabis prohibition application. The mission of the ECDC is to support orderly and planned economic development in keeping with the character of the town. A productive and prosperous community stems from creating a viable economic foundation. To this end, the ECDC supports allowing for cannabis establishments in Ridgefield, whether for medical or recreational use. Members of the Commission feel strongly that Ridgefield's economic success is dependent on supporting businesses that bolster our tax base and have relevance in today's economy. The cannabis industry is already an acceptable component of many state and town economies across the country. Connecticut has a long history of cultivating tobacco and remains one of the top ten tobacco-producing states in the nation. The geographic and environmental qualities that make the state appealing for cultivating tobacco make it equally appealing for cultivating cannabis. Cannabis easily surpasses tobacco in positive use, such as medicinal treatment for pain, sleep orders, and nausea. In reviewing the application from Kirk Carr to the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding prohibition of cannabis establishments per Public Act twenty-one dash two, the ECDC concluded that cannabis establishments will enhance economic activity. The ECDC anticipates that cannabis establishments would be regulated by the town as to location, use, and more. If at any point the town, whether through ordinance or town vote, prohibits retail sales of cannabis, the ECDC recommends that the town consider that non-retail businesses could be allowed, such as production, cultivation, packaging, and transportation. And that is what the ECDC wanted to let the Planning and Zoning know. We have not been able, we, time did not allow for us to submit a letter stating this. I can submit the statement in writing if Planning and Zoning would prefer that. But given our, I think we got notice on Thursday of this meeting and with the time schedule, et cetera, we were not able to submit a written statement.
But we can. Are unanimous or just a preponderance?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norrit.
We're here from Alice.
Any other questions? From Ms. Norrit before I move to Alice.
Thank you.
May I just say something, please? The Mr. Morris and Ms. Norrit were at the public hearing in July. And Mr. Morris did talk about a million dollars in tax revenues that he expected from, I guess, local sales tax. Ms. Norrit said, as she did tonight, that there were other businesses besides dispensaries, and dispensaries are really the only thing she thinks people object to. Those two arguments together are incoherent because the only way you're going to generate revenue is through sales tax of dispensaries. That's the only way you raise any additional monies. The first selectman asked if there had been a vote on this. Maybe they weren't expecting the question, but the answer was, we don't remember. And it's only advisory, and we don't vote on advisory. I know Mr. Norrit's claiming it's unanimous, but earlier this this last public hearing, she said there had been no vote on it. So I'm not quite sure. And I was at the last meeting where I tried to raise the issue with them. They weren't particularly eager to hear from me. But it's my impression, based on what she has said and what Mr. Morris has said, that there's never been an official vote taken on this. I'd also like to talk a little bit.
We had a special meeting. We had a special meeting this morning, and we took a vote, and it was unanimous.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Was that, was that meeting announced?
It was. It was posted.
When was it posted?
On Saturday.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not really sure that's in compliance with Freedom of Information Act, but we'll.
I gave it to Town Hall. It's special meetings need twenty-four hours. I gave it to Town Hall on Friday, which is, you can, you can look up the rules. I'm not going to discuss the rules with you right now.
Yeah, well, that's why. In the presentation that I was not able to give, it's included in that is that, is that the taxes that are raised on, like selling cannabis in the state of Connecticut, of that only eleven cents stays in the town. Sixty-six cents of it is excise tax, highly regressive tax. Twenty-three cents is in the state's sales tax. So, and the cost, the economic costs, the social and economic costs that are, that have been documented by the Centennial Institute of the Colorado Christian University, is four and a half dollars of economic and social costs for every dollar of taxes raised. But this town only keeps eleven cents of those taxes, while the four dollars and fifty cents of social costs remain locally. It's a very bad economic.
Social cost will be here. No, if you believe there's a social cost, it will be here no matter what. Cannabis is legal in this state, medicinal or recreational. So it will be in this town, whether we sell it or not. And that is, so the ECDC is, is charged with supporting businesses in this town.
Please call the meeting to order. I didn't interrupt Ms. Norrit.
Mr. Carr, I'd be happy to call the meeting to order. I think the order is to allow the staff report. You've had quite a bit of time. Do you, do you need to conclude?
Well, I had, I had an hour presentation of very important documentation from a lot of different sources. I've not been able to share it because of the technical difficulties.
Mr. Carr, would you like to continue the public hearings?
I would not like to continue. I'd like for you to end this tonight and to vote on this application and to approve the application. This is, this is really unfortunate that we've waited so long to have this public hearing and to have done it in this manner. This was submitted on the fourteenth of June. We should have been able to do this in person sometime in July. I know you've tried to make this, to stretch this out as much as you can.
Mr. Carr, we had a very busy agenda through June and July, as I think you know, because you've joined a lot of the meetings. We had three-hour meetings pretty much every night in June, July, from a very busy agenda. So I only apologize to you that you, your application came in the docket where it needed to, based on our schedule. I think you were, you were advised when the application came in that our schedule was quite busy through June and July. And there was nothing but other than a busy schedule of three-hour meetings every night. Do you have anything else you'd like?
I'll, I'll accept that, but not necessarily at face value. That's fine. I mean, finally. Excuse me?
I don't accept the figures that you gave at face value. There's no reason why we should. We don't have any documentation for that.
The documentation has been uploaded. I gave a hard copy to the, to the Land Use Office today. This was the Centennial Institute in Colorado that's done that research. It's, you know, like that thick, and it's well, you know, it's well documented. But whether it's four and a half dollars or two dollars or one dollar, for one dollar, you're only keeping ten percent or ten cents locally. I mean, it is really a very bad deal for towns that do this. And by the way, the towns that have, that have approved cannabis tend to be, and this was also in the presentation, tend to be lower income, less educated towns. The towns that have, that have said no to this are better educated, more affluent towns. Smart towns are not going to allow this kind of business in their town. Ridgefield, this is so incompatible with Ridgefield. And by the way, the businesses that you bring in would not be accretive. They would, the other businesses around them would flee, and those empty storefronts would be filled with other.
That is total supposition, sir.
Yes, I'm giving you my opinion. I have a right to an opinion, the same as you do, Mr. Cass. And I would appreciate Mr. Hendrick calling this meeting to order. Mr. Cass is going to have plenty of time to discuss this with you after the, after this is closed. I don't think this is supposed to be debated at this point. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hendrick.
Well, I'm sorry, you're breaking up a little bit, Mr. Carr, but, but I, I think we also, it's, it's good for the Commission to chat with you before before you want to close the public hearing, so.
I'm, I'm fine. If they want to ask questions, I just don't, I prefer not to be interrupted. I think that's just impolite, and I think as a chairman, I'm not going to, I didn't interrupt Ms. Norrit. She interrupted me. I didn't, won't interrupt Mr. Cass. He's interrupted me. I just think that decorum is required under Robert's rules.
Okay.
Mr. Hendrick, can I ask, or make one last point?
Sure, Mr. Tartaglia.
Mrs. Knowitt's presentation, I got a lot of trouble with it, as I did with the earlier. First of all, it's her statement. We don't have proper minutes or notice in the record. That was a public, that's a public commission, and it's subject to procedures. I'm finding a little difficulty with that. I understand, Mrs. Knowitt's political endeavors, which are the progressive left, I understand and respect. The town has a strong or a bit of a.
There's no place for that, Mr. Tartaglia, and you know it.
That's, that's not true, Cass. This whole thing is about a progressive left movement. It's all about that. And it's a question that's a very deep philosophical question, but the real question has to be limited now. You're not going to re-debate marijuana, whether it's good or bad. And Ms. Norrit hasn't presented you with any data, economic data, that says what she said, where we presented detailed studies that contradict her statement. That committee is a sloppy committee. They're not.
Mr. Tartaglia, you're out of, you're out of order.
It's just a normal thing. That's my last.
Mr. Tartaglia, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to mute you and move back into the audience.
Oh, thank you. That's all right. I can control myself. That's the answer. EC.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's breaking up a lot for me, so I don't even have, can't hear everything that everyone.
I can hear from Mr. Junior.
Glory has her hand up again.
Okay, Ms. Norrit.
I highly object to anyone stating that the ECDC is not a balanced commission. We are equally weighted Republican, Democrats, and Independent. We had a unanimous opinion, and I highly object for anyone stating that my personal opinions, which Mr. Tartaglia and no one else knows what they are, is changing anything about what the ECDC voted on unanimously. I think this is, was exceptionally rude, and it was simply wrong.
I support that opinion a hundred percent.
I apologize for it. Again, I get a lot of unstable internet connection on my side, so. Let's see it on. Okay. Why don't we go to Alice for staff?
Um, I wrote my report on August sixteenth. It's in the in the actual application. It gives an overview and then a brief history, basically what we have already talked about. Planning and zoning approved one-year moratorium, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, to allow time for P and Z to create regulations or to allow for the Board of Selectmen to create an ordinance concerning cannabis establishments. The Board of Selectmen held public information sessions, as also has been mentioned throughout these meetings, this meeting. And their vote is scheduled, a vote through a public hearing is scheduled to be held on September seventh. Regulation change application eight twenty-two dash one, the one we're discussing, was submitted on June fourteenth. And the, this proposed, the proposed ordinance and the regulation would both prohibit all medical cannabis.
To the, speak toward your camera.
Oh, sorry. I'm reading from another computer.
Just turn your head.
Okay. Referrals were sent. Referrals were sent to health and police. They were both in favor of prohibition. ECDC and Board of Selectmen received them, and we've heard from Glory about that. Social Services also commented, and that's attached to the application. There have been a number of, of hearings that I also mentioned in my letter. Board of Selectmen, there's a video. Economic Development has a video in minutes. And it's the, it's my opinion that Planning and Zoning should wait until after the public hearing vote for an ordinance on September 7th, 2022. The, the town vote for the ordinance would allow for more public opinion from the residents of Ridgefield to determine whether there should be a complete prohibition. The commission can close the public hearing tonight or continue to September 13th. And whatever night you close on, you then have 65 days to make a decision. I'm sorry, 65 days. Yeah, you have to make a decision within 65 days. I'm sorry, I'm getting confused. That's it.
And that 65 days would give the Board of Selectmen a chance to get their ducks in order, however they decide to do that. And we would have heard more from the town during that informational period.
The, Alice, just to clarify, the, 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 the meeting, the vote, the town vote is scheduled for September 7th, right?
Yes.
So that, that's definitive, Mr. Cass. September 7th, the town, special town meeting with a vote is scheduled for that night on this, on the proposed ordinance.
If the, I just want to clarify, if the ordinance does pass at the town meeting, at that point, do we still have to make legislation? Do we have to make legislation either way? If the ordinance passes, we don't have to do anything.
The ordinance passes, the cannabis establishments are prohibited in the town of Ridgefield, period.
I believe we did get an opinion, I checked with Alice on this, from counsel suggesting that despite of the fact that we might get such an ordinance, that the commission should take a stand on a regulation as well. Am I wrong about that?
Um, I don't think he spoke to that, but of course, having the application to extend the moratorium gives time to the commission to discuss it further.
And at that point, if we did want to write, create a legis, piece of legislation, we would draft that and vote on it.
Yes.
Yes, but in any event, were the town to vote an ordinance prohibiting it, that ordinance would take precedence over.
Right, right, right.
Okay, let's let Mr. Carr speak while the public hearing is still open, Mr. Carr.
First of all, I'd like to say that certainly nothing I've said was intended to be in any way disrespectful to Ms. Norwood or to the ECDC. And secondly, th- this is an application that if it, if you have not decided on it tonight and there's a, an ordinance passed, we are still an applicant. We still have a right to a vote on our application, whether there's an ordinance or not. The application is to basically change an existing ordinance that is outdated by the state statute. This is a friendly application, basically taking an existing ordinance and bringing it into compliance with state statutes using a, a regulation. I think I may have misused the word ordinance, but to, to, this is a regulation, basically updating an existing regulation. That regulation will remain on your books after the ordinance is passed or fails. And the application is basically trying to bring that existing regulation up to date with the state sta, statutes, using the app, using the regulations that New Canaan passed, referring to those, to those state statutes. So the idea that somehow this ordinance will make this all go away, it doesn't. You will still need to, to either vote this application down, which you have a right to. And you can then go on and create whatever kind of regulations you want, but I think if this, if the ordinance passes, you probably don't want to come up with regulations that somehow try to define, defy the ordinance. And this regulation would be in compliance with that ordinance, and it would be something you would probably not want to spend a lot of more effort on writing and doing more work on. I think we've done the work for you. Whether you want to accept it tonight or accept it later in September, I guess that's up to you, but I think.
Well, I, I do think it's important, and excuse me, I do think it's important that going the route of an ordinance, there is a large percentage of the population, the entire Ridgefield voting population now has the opportunity to speak to this. And knowing that that's forthcoming, I think that's an important piece of information that we're currently missing, one looking at this permit, this application.
In some circles, they call it democracy.
Precisely.
Mr. Carr, I only have one question for you before, I, I want to give you the opportunity. While the public hearing is still open, and it sounds like maybe my question is on the heads of others, if I'm just listening to that, my question for you is this simple. Why do you believe we should act on your application? Why do you believe we should vote to prohibit cannabis establishments before the community has a chance to vote on a proposed ordinance on the same subject? I'm, I, you haven't convinced me anyway, as one, why, why these seven or eight or nine people in the Planning and Zoning Commission should put ourselves ahead of the community at large. I, could you convince me why we should preempt the?
Well, the re, the reason we're here tonight is because after the Board of Selectmen had three, not one, not two, but three public hearings. They're having two more now before this meeting on September 7th. They gave you what they thought was their best advice, which you had asked for. And, and you were elected not to turn these decisions back to the public. I mean, I understand the idea of this is democracy, but we're not a direct democracy on every subject. You have, you know, you passed the, the moratorium without, you know, a public vote. You passed the, the.
We passed the moratorium in, in order to have public debate.
Right, but you also.
And an ordinance potentially proposed. That's, I was on the question at the time, and I can tell you, that's the reason why we did the ordinance, was to give time for Board of Selectmen to have public debate and potentially an ordinance.
Right, and, and the Board of Selectmen, first of all, and you did pass the regulation prohibiting recreational cannabis in 2015 without any kind of public vote. That was, that was your job to do, and I think it's your job to do now. And you asked the Board of Selectmen for their advice. They, on advice of, do you want to, let me finish, on advice of counsel, they were told not to have a referendum because they were, of a, of an opinion. They brought you their best guidance. You had a, you had a motion and a second, and you didn't let that process go through. You, you tabled it, and then you convinced the, the two people who moved and seconded that they should withdraw it because of this ordinance. And the only reason for the ordinance is because you forced the Board of Selectmen. It's in desperation that they're going forward with this ordinance. They really wanted you to do what you were elected to do, and you've decided not to do it. Now, you can wait until after the ordinance. That's your prerogative. You feel uncomfortable making the decision? I, all I can say is I'm not sure why you run for planning and zoning if you're not prepared to make these kinds of decisions without calling in, you know, a, a public vote. That's what, and by the way, if you did that, there's still an opportunity for people to bring a petition. There's a democratic process to overrule that. So I mean, it's not like you're denying democracy by doing your job. And I'm sorry if I can't convince you, but I, but I don't think you convinced me that you need to wait until September 7th to do what you know is right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Any other questions for Mr. Carr? Any other questions for Ms. Do? All right, Mr. Carr, I'll, as the applicant, we always, we always sort of ask the applicant, would you like to continue this meeting? It does not sound like there's any further discussion or questions for you as an applicant. Would you like to continue, or would you like us to close the public hearing?
I'd prefer you to close the public hearing and vote on this tonight and, and approve this application. If you don't, I can come back and I can bring the presentation I wasn't able to give. I have over 10 hours of video. I, I boil it down to one hour. We can, we can drag this out as long as you want to drag it out.
No, it's, it's really actually also up to you. If, if, if you're saying you'd like to close the public hearing, then I will ask the commission members if they would like to close the public hearing, but we always want to make sure we think about the applicant first. You, you don't have anything more to add, it sounds like, at the moment.
If, if, if you, if you don't vote on this, yeah, if you close the public hearing, I guess, and you don't vote on it till after, I mean, I don't know what more you're going to, I guess you're going to know that the ordinance passed or didn't pass. So maybe that's worth waiting. I don't think so, but that's up to you. So. I, I think I have, I've not been really able to say everything I wanted to say because of the format, but I'm not sure I'm going to say anything that's going to convince you otherwise.
Okay. I will I'll look to the commission here. Does anybody have any further topics or things they feel that we need to address before we close the public hearing, or would you like me to close the public hearing?
For me, I can see that Mr. Kurt feels that a lot of the point he wanted to make that the video that he wanted to share, the information he wanted to share, he couldn't share because of the technology issue he was running to. So I think in all fairness, I, I, I think we need to hear him out. And I wonder if since he has like an hour or so of video of presentation pulled together, I'm wondering whether he can maybe send that to us, so that we, we have, get a chance to see the, all the points he wanted to make. It looks like he has a lot of data behind the points he's making. And I think for us to close this hearing and vote on it without all the information that he wanted to share, I, I, I question that. So in my view, I think we should after this meeting hopefully get the information from Mr. Carr. So that we'll get a chance to go through all the points and the data that he has. That, that's my point.
I, I believe all of the documents that Mr. Carr submitted, the 95-page one is attached and uploaded to the application.
And I also dropped off a hard copy today to them.
Right. Yes.
Right.
So we can look through and see it.
And we can upload that on the public file, right, on the application file, if it's not.
It is on the application file, yes, but we just got it yesterday, I think, or the day before.
Okay. I hear Ben, I hear what you're saying, but at the same time, I also am trying to hear Mr. Carr, who seems actually really keen that we close the public hearing and move to a vote. Right, Mr. Carr?
Those are not synonymous. We must remember that, Mr. Chairman. Closing a public hearing and moving to a vote is not, are not synonymous.
Fair, that's true.
I would be in favor of closing the public hearing, but not moving to a vote.
Okay.
That we should wait for as much of the, pardon me, Mr. Carr, the democratic process as possible to take place. It is, it is calendar, and it is in the town's interest to see that calendar through the fruition. And at that time would be appropriate for us to act, but I think we can certainly close the public hearing tonight.
Okay, Mr. Cass, your point's well taken. So let's, let's take those one step at a time. Is there, you know, is there anything further for the public hearing? It sounds like Mr. Carr's materials have all been submitted. Any, anyone else feel that we need anything else for the public hearing?
Mr. Hendrick, just so you're aware, the, the video that I was going to show this evening has already been uploaded to YouTube. Will be available at midnight tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carr.
And I'll send, I'll send you a link.
Thank you. Ms. Constantino?
I would just agree with Ben. I don't know if that makes any difference to Mr. Carr, but I would be as well interested in seeing, you know, that he put the work together. I'd be interested in seeing the video as well.
Okay. We don't need the public hearing for that, right? Because it's already been submitted.
Well, I don't think the video has, but the 95-page document that's similar. Is that correct, Mr. Carr?
I have not submitted the video. But anyway, it will be available on YouTube this evening.
Should we attach it? Are we able to attach it?
I mean, I could bring it in on a thumb drive and give it to Land Use. I mean, at this point, you know, if you're not going to vote on this tonight, and we might as well keep the public hearing open so that you can ask me questions about it after the, after the the ordinance is passed on September the 7th.
Yes, and actually, we couldn't even accept that information if they close the public hearing tonight. They couldn't accept the video.
Okay.
If the video is in the public domain, it's not a matter of.
Well, it won't, it won't be until midnight. If we keep going till midnight, then then it counts.
Mr. Carr, I don't think anybody's trying to trip you up here. I, for the record, I'd be perfectly happy with closing the public hearing and voting myself. But it sounds like there are members of the commission that would like to see your video, and, and so unless you object, it sounds like it's, it's the right thing at this point to keep the public hearing open.
But I would certainly respect that decision if that's the decision of the commission.
And, and, and then at the continuation of the public hearing, we would spend an hour on a video that you already described to us. It's fair.
Can, can Mr. Carr not put a link, loaded a link onto our portal?
That's, that's, that's what I was going to go to. I think the idea is Mr. Carr can send either the video or a link to the video, which sounds like it's going to be available at midnight tonight. And then that video can be reviewed by the commissioners too, in particular, who have specifically said they'd like to see it, but maybe all of us would like to see it. And then in our next meeting, we'd have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Carr, ask questions, et cetera, about that video, but we will have not closed the public hearing before members have had an opportunity to look at the video, which won't happen till later tonight or tomorrow at the earliest.
I, I do have one, I have a question. For the legislation, if we were to vote yes for this, we would be accepting the legislation as written. Is that correct?
Yeah, your, 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 your vote ultimately needs to be on the regulation amendment as submitted by Mr.
As submitted. So, I mean, I do think that we would want like our legal review process to go through before we voted on something that wasn't written by the commission or town council.
Yes.
Yep.
If, if that video is uploaded in time for it to be part of these proceedings, I think it would be important also for those of us who are interested to examine the source of the data that is compiled within the context of that video.
Okay, so, Mr. Carr, again, we're not, I'm not, I'm personally not trying to trip you up at all, but I'm trying to run the best process for everybody, and it sounds like people have an interest in seeing your video. It sounds like you can get the link or, or the actual video itself sent over to the office within the next 24 hours, but, but not in the next two minutes. And therefore, we'll continue the public hearing till September 13th, when everyone will have had an opportunity to look at your video, and then we'll have an opportunity to ask you questions or dialogue about it. And.
That seems, that seems reasonable. Thank you.
All right. So we'll continue the public hearing on this topic. Okay. There you go. Thank you. And I'm going to move folks back to attendees. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. Oh, are, are you going to, are, are you sticking around for the moratorium as well, or no?
Yes, I'll be sticking around for that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carr. Okay, thank you, Mr. Carr. Alice, you're gonna have to put Mr. Carr back into the audience. For some reason, I can't probably because you brought him up.
Okay.
Um, okay, so next item on the agenda is A dash twenty-two dash two. This is a very similar topic. It is a commission initiated uh, extension of our, uh, of our moratorium cannabis establishments. Alice, do you want to read the?
Mr. Carr, if I knock you off by mistake, please just call back in. Oh, you can't, he can't rejoin if I do that. Um, I'm not sure how to make him a panelist again.
You're right, I just got it. There you go.
Oh, thank you. So A dash twenty-two dash two, a regulation amendment application for extension of the existing moratorium for medical and adult use cannabis establishments in all zoning districts in the town of Ridgefield. It was commission initiated, it was formally received on July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, and the public he- hearing, the legal notice was in the Ridgefield press on both August fourth and August eleventh. The correspondence is is the same as the last application. Sorry, let me just. The police response, the health department. Um, we also included Ms. Semantini's and social services um, on the correspondence for this particular application. And that's all I have.
Okay, so just to recap for everyone, uh, this is, uh, this is an extension of the existing moratorium commission initiated uh, in order to simply extend the amount of time because the, uh, moratorium itself expires on, as it's set today, expires on September twenty-fourth. Um, and there was some concern, to refresh everybody's memory, in June, July, that, uh, you know, if the town vote is not successful, or even if it is successful, and we need to make small modifications to our regulations as written uh, to either comply with ordinance that was done or to write a different regulation if the ordinance is not successful, that we certainly would benefit from having more than a few weeks to do that. Uh, so we needed a little bit more than September twenty-fourth, and the logic was uh, Alice, to make this December thirty-first, is it December thirty-first?
December sixteenth.
Sixteenth, sorry, because that, that matches a meeting, right? So.
Yes.
So this will, uh, secure us enough time to do that, updates of our regulation. Um, frankly, we did, we did have a discussion about, um, should it be longer, but we think the, the, you know, based conversation with Tom Beecher, whatnot, and Alice and myself, we feel that, uh, you know, everyone wants closure to this topic, so it's probably better to have a, you know, a tight timeframe so that we'll have a town vote September seventh, and let's get on it and and update our regulations in accordance right after that.
Do you need us to make a motion, Rob, or or do you want us to discuss?
We're in public hearing.
We're in public hearing right now, but since this is commission initiated, I guess I'm, I'm given a little bit of the logic to why this is presented the way it is.
You can close the public hearing, we can then go.
Yeah, is there any further uh, you know, questions for the public hearing portion, then we can move to discussion.
Um, I did do a staff report for this as well.
Oh, do you want to do that now too, Alice?
It's, it's basically the same. Um, the same information. Um, we received it the twenty-sixth of July, the public hearing starts this evening, and it has to be closed by September twentieth. It's the opinion of the staff that the moratorium extension would give time to the commission to create a new regulation if the vote for a total prohibition of cannabis establishes establishments does not pass. The commission will need to act quickly to pass a regulation by December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, or you could also increase the time of extension if needed. And you have, you can continue the public hearing, basically the same as the last one. Continue it, or you can close it this evening, and you'd have, you close it the next meeting, September thirteenth, and make a decision within sixty-five days of the close.
Okay. Any other questions before I close the public hearing? So anyone from the public that would like to speak, I should, I should do that before the public hearing closes. I don't see any hands coming up.
No.
No hands, okay. I will close the public hearing. Uh, all right, um, we can move on then, uh, section three of the agenda is old business. We already took care of three dot one public hearing, uh, for, and the vote for fifty Webster Road, SP twenty-two twelve. Um, we are going to continue A dash twenty-two dash one, that's the next item on the agenda, so we won't act on that tonight. Uh, item three dot three, the public hearing is closed. I just closed it for A dash twenty-two dash two. That's the, uh, extension of the moratorium. Is there any discussion or is there a motion?
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of extending the moratorium. I think it's important for us to have time for the commission to draft whatever legislation needs to be presented and consult with counsel and do it on, um, with thought and consideration and not be rushed into it.
Second that motion.
I'll second.
Wow, so was that a motion?
Yes, I mean, a motion.
So motion to approve made by Ms. O'Cronley, seconded by, we'll give it to Mr. Katz, I think I heard quick first. Sorry, Miss Constantino.
I, I got it to a year last time, so.
All right, is there any further discussion before I call the vote? No discussion, okay. Uh, I'll take, uh, call the question, all in favor of the motion?
Hi.
Hi. Are there any opposed? None opposed, none abstained, the motion carries unanimously.
All right, planning and zoning can be maddening, but anger is a killer. Don't get mad, just don't ever forget and ultimately get even. Because revenge is a dish best served cold. There is still a Freedom of Information Commission and an appellate court, and the final arbiters are the voters of Ridgefield. If these commissioners treat applicants with prejudice and don't want to do what they were elected to do, their parties should find candidates who do and who will, and the voters need to vote more wisely in the future.